As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call our Clayton Town Council meeting to order. I'd like you to stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have two adjustments we'd like to request. The first is under consent agenda, which is number three item on the agenda. We'd like to move three C wastewater allocation policy and actually, obviously, remove from consent agenda and actually move it to the January 21st meeting, and we place it under old business since we are looking at making some revisions to that. The second item is going to be under public hearings, and it'll be public hearings and D, the code of ordinance, unified development. We would ask council to continue that public hearing until the January 21st meeting. D, yes, sir.
I have that duly noted on our agenda. Up next is your consent agenda.
Move with approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries. Up next is Student Art Month proclamation presentation to Susan Johnson of the Clayton Women's Club and the Student Arts Festival Chair.
Mr. Mayor, member of the Town Council and Clayton citizens, on behalf of the Women's Club of Clayton and the Greater Federation of the Women's Club of North Carolina, I'm here to ask you for a proclamation to designate the month of January as Student Art Month. The Women's Club sponsors the students of Clayton area schools each January by placing their work in the Clayton Center Gallery and hosting a reception and an award ceremony. This year, the festival will be Thursday, January 9th at 6:00. There are eight Clayton area schools, 110 students, and 131 pieces of work represented in the gallery this year. We invite Mayor McLeod, council members, and Clayton citizens to attend the festival to celebrate the creative art of our students. Thank you.
So proclamation, Student Art Month, whereas the arts in its many forms constitute an important part of the community and contribute to the development of our youth, and whereas participation in and enjoyment of the arts can take place in many forms, including the visual arts, fine arts, and performing arts, and whereas the Women's Club of Clayton has sought to promote the involvement of our youth in various art projects to the betterment of their minds and the community as a whole, now therefore let it be proclaimed by the honorable mayor and the Town Council of the town of Clayton that the month of January each year be recognized as Student Art Month. Let it also be proclaimed that all businesses, industries, and citizens in the Clayton community are urged to support and encourage the school-aged children of Clayton to participate in the arts duly proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council this sixth day of January 2020 while in regular session. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Plan Development Rezoning.
Good evening, Council. Haley Hoag with the Planning Department. The applicant is requesting to rezon the subject three properties from residential estate to planned development residential. There is an associated master plan running alongside this application that we will present after a motion is made on the rezoning. The properties in total are 84.73 acres in size, and they are located off of Highway 70, just west of Wildwood Drive and south of Irish Street. And this is a view of the property from Highway 70.
I'm not sure why it's not working.
It's working from here. Should I just stand?
Yeah, you can stand here.
Okay. Works from this side. So...
Or you just don't...
So the consistency and the compatibility, the rezoning is almost, or is mostly inconsistent with the future land use map designation, which is low-density residential for two of the three properties. Low-density residential in our comp plan does limit the density to three units per acre, and they are proposing in their associated master plan 3.81 units per acre. However, we do support the rezoning due to the proximity to Highway 70 business and the proposed density remaining close to the recommended three units per acre. And if the rezoning is approved tonight, the future land use map would be automatically updated accordingly, and the applicant has addressed the approval criteria for the rezoning in their application. And Planning Board did recommend approval of the rezoning at their November meeting for 2019-40 PDD, and staff is also recommending approval of the rezoning. And again, after this, we would present the associated master plan.
All right. Questions or comments for staff? Mr. Bun.
I think this may be addressed, need to be addressed to the developer. I was looking at the neighborhood meeting minutes and so forth, and they just stated the questions but no answers. So I would like to address that to the developer if I could, whenever that comes up.
Okay.
Questions or comments from staff? Mr. Granis.
So it was acknowledged that the development plan or the rezoning is really not consistent with our 2040 plan, but staff is saying that it appears to be acceptable. Could you expand on that a little bit?
So, yes. So rezonings, the comp plan is a recommending plan. It is a guideline that we adopted in 2015, and as Clayton has grown, we have started to look at Clayton a little bit different about where growth might occur and in what density. For that property, two of the three properties are located right off of Highway 70 and to the north. It's right behind Sheets at 42 East. It's pretty high density there, and so we feel that it would be consistent. So if you were to approve tonight, you would be changing that designation in the future land use map.
Okay. And also, in the approval criteria, under section four, the capacity of adequate public facilities and services, including schools, roads, recreation facilities, wastewater treatment, potable water supply, and stormwater drainage facilities is available for the proposed use. And the response is somewhat, I think, apparent of the qualification in that particular item, and I just wanted to know if the staff is in full agreement with the statement that they have in the approval criteria.
Yes, we are.
And could you explain why?
Can I say, or...
Yeah, you can go back.
I need to grab a copy of the application real quick. Or could you read the response that they had given? I don't have the application in front of me.
Based on discussions with town staff, schools, roads, recreation facilities, wastewater treatment, water supply, and stormwater drainage are available for this project. Capacity is available to support this development based on our discussions.
Yes, they are all available, and so we do agree with that statement, and the wastewater, for example, would be voted on with the subdivision. And so for the rezoning alone, everything is available, so we do agree with the statement from them.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, anyone else?
And the applicant is here as well to speak.
Okay. We'll hear from the applicant. Anything you want to say? Okay. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name's Ryan Fisher with Withers-Ravinell, the civil engineer and project manager for this project. Staff did a great job presenting the rezoning. If you have any questions, be happy to, I know there's some about the neighborhood meeting. Is there any questions on that?
Wait for the next section to...
So let's just make clarification for the record that what we are discussing at this point in time right now is strictly about rezoning, because there's no need to discuss anything else if rezoning does not take place.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
So, any questions as it pertains to rezoning for the applicant?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So this has been noted as a public hearing, and anyone who wishes to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Okay.
Either microphone you would like.
Good evening. I'm Jason Cox. We own the adjoining property, and it is one of the mega sites for eastern North Carolina. Presents a significant opportunity at some point to the town of Clayton in terms of attracting industry and attracting jobs, thousands of jobs, similar to Griffles or Nova, right next door to this property, adjoining this property. I don't think consideration has been given to the impact that it may have to recruiting industry to that site. We wanted to raise that concern. It's obviously a long-term plan, but we would like the council and the town to consider the impact to that mega site and what impact they may have in recruiting industry and jobs to the town. Thank you.
And you want else?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. John Salupo, 117 Hanson Run. Has there been any consideration to acreage being put aside for them to allow access for a school to be built? At the current rate of construction, most of the schools that have been built in new communities are already at capacity with over 26 students per classroom, and two years ago they were at 14 to 19. Based on the census of 2.3 children per family in the United States per year, this development's over 500 children, and I was just wondering if they took into consideration of building a school. That's...
All right. Thank you, sir.
I'm the county economic developer for Johnston County. You didn't wear a tie. I figured you weren't, so I didn't wear one either. So I appreciate the casualness of the night's meeting. My comments are not to speak in favor or against the project, but just to provide some insight. I've been asked and have met with the Cox family, and obviously, economic development and industrial growth and creating jobs for our citizens locally is key. Just want to make sure that as the project moves forward or is considered of proper buffering as it relates to that. I know that there's been several projects that have looked at Johnston County, and one of the key things that they look at is what is neighboring around the site, and so just want to make sure that everybody takes that in consideration as they make the decision. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, no one else wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their comments. I am ready for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, after considering the recommendations of the planning board and the planning director, I move to approve case number 2019-40 PDD Buckhorn Plan Development and to approve the statement of consistency and reasons for this included in the agenda package.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the rezoning request. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries. Thank you. With that, item of business being complete, we'll move on to the next one, which is the 2019-39 SD Buckhorn Branch Preliminary Plat. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and for a briefing on quasi-judicial hearings, I will turn it over to our attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the council sits more in a judge-like fashion than it does in a legislative action such as the rezoning that just took place. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the council will only consider evidence that is presented before it this evening at the hearing, and that will be evidence that is competent, material, and substantial, and is provided to the council after, from someone who has been affirmed by our clerk. The council will not consider hearsay evidence in order to make its decision this evening, and with that, I will turn it over to the clerk for an affirmation. I believe we would ask that anyone who wishes to speak in any form or fashion related to this item, stand and be affirmed at this time.
Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief? Thank you. When you come up to offer your testimony, please make sure you fill in the sign-in sheet. Thank you.
The applicant is requesting a preliminary plat approval tonight, which will serve as a master plan for Buckhorn Branch development. They are proposing a master plan to go along with the rezoning that was just approved for the planned development for 324 lots. The properties in total are 84.73 acres in size, and they are located just off of Highway And again, this is the view of the property. This would be the main entrance off of 70. It would be a right-in, right-out only, and to the left on this picture, you can see that dirt road going down. That is Wildwood Drive, for reference. And this is the proposed master plan. They are proposing 203 single-family houses, and the sole consists of front-loaded and rear-loaded units. The rear-loaded units are shown in the green color on the plan, and the front-loaded are shown in purple. And then they are proposing 121 townhomes as well, which are shown in yellow, mostly at the southern portion of the development. And the density that they are proposing is 3.81 units per acre. They will be providing landscaping along the perimeter of the development as required by the code, which would be a classy buffer. There are some existing natural areas that they will keep to meet those requirements, mostly to the north and to the west. Throughout the site, they are proposing open space, which is shown in that bright blue color on the master plan. They are providing pocket parks between the blocks of the rear-loaded units, and they're also providing an amenity center at the entrance of the development, and that would be submitted in the future as a minor site plan. And then for access, they do meet the required access points for fire and planning. They are proposing access, again, off of 70, which would be a right-in, right-out only, access off of Irish Street, and then two connections to Wildwood Drive and a stubout to the south to future development. These are the architectural elevations that they're proposing for the townhomes. The townhome buildings will vary in terms of siding type and colors, but they will consist of materials listed in the site plan, which include wood, vinyl, fiber cement, masonry, and so on, and they'll consist of a combination of those materials, and they do meet the requirements of the UDC. A traffic study was required for this development, and it was performed and determined that 2,882 daily trips would be generated from this development. The AM peak trips would be 208, and the PM peak trips would be 273. Through that TIA and with NCDOT's comments, they are required to do a right-turn lane onto Wildwood Drive with a 100-foot taper, and they will be paving Irish Street, which is currently a gravel road. They will be paving it to a 40-foot right-of-way with sidewalk and curb and gutter, and then they will be paving Wildwood Drive to the center line for their portion with sidewalk and curb and gutter as well. And then the other improvements outlined in NCDOT's comments were actually already completed by NCDOT as part of their tip project, W5704. And for reference, this is what Irish Street and Wildwood Drive currently look like. So Irish Street is shown on the left. It is an existing gravel road, and again, that would be 40-foot right-of-way with curb and gutter, sidewalk, and paved. And then Wildwood Drive, the property line actually goes to the center line of the road, so they will be developing up to the center line, and then the remainder of Wildwood Drive would be developed in the future by whoever develops the properties to the east. And the proposed subdivision is consistent with the comprehensive plan specifically outlined in the staff report. Goal H1, which would be to encourage a range of housing types and lot sizes that meet the needs of various income levels, family sizes, and ages, and goal LU1, which is to preserve Clayton's small-town character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. And the applicant has addressed the findings of fact for this application in the staff And with that, Planning Board did not review this application because they do not review quasi-judicial applications, but if approved, staff is recommending conditions of approval be placed on the subdivision plan as outlined in the staff report, and tonight, Town Council will make a motion on this subdivision plan following the motion that was made on the rezoning. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have, and the applicant is here as well to present.
Questions of staff?
I understand there's an easement on this property that town has some property on. Is that correct?
Can you go back to the master plan? Are you referencing the pump station?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
And do we know who owns that easement yet?
Allet Engineering, do you know?
Mr. Baird, were you sworn in?
Awesome. Thank you.
I do not. Joshua Baird, Town Engineer. I do not know off the top of my head.
So will that affect the number of houses that go into this development?
Are you referring to the easement to access? We do have an easement around the actual pump station itself. As far as the access easement, there is an access easement through there. I'm not sure the exact terms around that, the access easement, whether it's strictly to the town or just a blanket access easement through there.
So it could affect the number of houses depend on who owns this piece of property?
As far as the sizing of the pump station, or I understand your question, sir?
The owner of the easement allowing this to happen.
Yeah, I think the applicant has been working on some due diligence to that, so I think they can answer some of your questions. I think they've been working on that.
Okay.
The dedicated area in the blue that you referenced of open space, what percentage of that open space is usable?
So by code, they are required to set aside 12.5% open space, and then 25% of that has to be usable, and that includes the amenity center that they are proposing.
And in your experience, obviously, we are at least at 25%, can you tell me approximately what the overall amount of percentage is usable?
I don't know the overall percentage for this plan without looking at the plan, but they are providing walking trails around the stormwater ponds, which would also count towards the active recreation, and then they are providing two square pocket parks in the middle between the blocks of the rear-loaded units, and then the amenity center, which I think they outlined may include a pole and some other amenities as well.
Finding of fact number two says the subdivision meets all required specifications of this chapter. The response was the proposed subdivision meets all the required specifications of chapter 155706 of the town's UDO. I would assume that staff concurs with that statement?
Yes, it has been TRC certified by the town staff.
Okay. And the third finding of fact, the subdivision will not be detrimental to the use or orderly development of other properties in the surrounding area and will not violate the character of existing standards for development of properties in the surrounding area. The answer was the proposed subdivision will not be detrimental to the orderly development of properties in the surrounding area. The project will provide future road stubs and utility extensions that will allow for future development of adjoining properties. I would assume that staff is compliant with that response. One concern that I have, which was brought up by the adjacent property owner, which, to be quite frank with you, I'm not familiar about the requirements, but is concerned about the viability of being able to sell property to an industry. How does that work in relationship to this type of development?
Do you mean like an industrial use?
Yes.
So whenever a use comes in, we would look at the compatibility with the adjacent properties, but if the use is permitted in the zoning district, then it would be permitted. If it's permitted outright, it would be permitted.
I do believe that the school board has a seat on the TRC. Is that correct?
They do. We started working with them to have all of the school information sent over to us for subdivisions in the future, which were included in the application or the staff report.
So would it be fair to say then that the school board is certainly aware of this project?
Yes, they are aware.
Okay. The traffic report was done in February of 2019.
It was.
And at that time, there were no approved developments to consider at that time in addition to this one. Has there been any additional developments that are either being discussed or have been approved in that immediate area that could affect the traffic report?
There haven't. If there were, we would have had them update the TIA to reflect those units.
Okay. And with respect to 70 and Hardy Lane, does staff have any concerns with respect to being able to make a left turn out of Hardy Lane to be able to go west on 70 at peak hours?
No, we don't.
Reason I raise that question is that particular intersection has the lowest grading. It goes down to as far as an F rating, and I think we all realize that if there's an F rating that's granted by NCDOT, that's not a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
And that's current.
Yeah, and NCDOT, they did review the plans as well, and they didn't have any concerns that they mentioned about Hardy.
Who's responsible for the cost of the new pump station?
I believe the developer, but I'll let Engineering touch on that.
Excuse me. Rich Capola, Public Services Director. The developer will bear all the costs to develop that new pump station. That'll also be taking offline another pump station to the north. That's an older, smaller pump station that we'd love to see go away. Hopefully that answered your question. One thing to Councilmember Bun's question earlier was regards to the access. I believe you were talking about the Irish Street access. That is currently, like Joshua was saying, is an access easement for our pump station. It is incumbent upon the developer to determine the ownership of that and/or rights to be able to use that for access. As you can see by the conditions they're required to develop that to a 40-foot right-of-way, paved, curb and gutter section with sidewalk, I believe, along it. So they would have to obtain any rights or requirements to be able to open that, or excuse me, create that improvement and open it up, and that would count towards their minimum number of access points per the... And that would count towards their minimum number of access points per the code.
I would assume too, Rich, that the force main is also included in the cost
That is correct.
that they would bore.
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I had, Mayor.
Anyone else? All right. If not, we'll hear from the applicant.
My name's Ryan Fisher, Withers Ravanell, project engineer, manager. Introduce my colleagues, David Brown, land planner with Withers Ravanell, Cole Daggerhart, our traffic engineer. If you have any questions, and Johnny Chapel, the developer. Not sure what to add to the staff's presentation. Overall, very good mix of units, a lot of open space, proposed. Think it's a great development, but if you have any questions, here to answer.
So it's pretty hard for me to see, but what is the buffer? Is the buffer? If so, what class buffer is it? And what are like the dimensions or requirement in that buffer?
For a planned development, they are required to have a Class C buffer, which would include a combination of shrubs and trees as well as a six-foot-tall opaque barrier. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that they have chosen a berm. And then they are utilizing existing woods around certain areas to meet that requirement as well. But for example, Wildwood Drive, I believe, is a berm. Is that correct, Ryan?
Yes.
I'm more interested in what it is along as it adjoins the Cox property.
It would just be a planted buffer there.
Ten-foot wide?
Ten-foot wide planted buffer, yes.
Does that add up?
They would have to have that six-foot-tall opaque barrier as well. So a berm, a fence, hedgerow, any combination. Sometimes they'll do a hedgerow, sometimes they'll do just a six-foot-tall fence with the plantings.
I don't know what to think about that. It sounds extremely minimal. And to, you know, the testimony from Economic Development of Johnson County, I don't want to do anything that's going to harm the site. That's a red flag for me, is the buffer enough? Is a six-foot fence enough? Is some shrubs and trees enough? You know?
And it's a Class C, right?
Class C buffer.
Class C.
Correct.
What would a B look like? More stout?
Aren't A and B greater widths? Or, yeah. What are the widths for B and A?
For all buffer types, they have an option between 10 feet, 15, or 20 feet. If it's 10 feet, it's going to be more dense than the plantings. And if it's 20 feet, it'll be less dense, it'll be more spread out. But there's an option, and that's for any type of buffer. So Class A, Class B, Class C, they all require that. The only difference is Class C requires the most number of plantings and that opaque barrier.
My question is, is that buffer going to hurt the Cox's property if it becomes industrial?
And since this is a quasi-judicial application, you are welcome to make any conditions that would maybe make the buffer a little bit more stringent, more plantings, as you see fit. So that is an option as well.
And I will just tie into that, staff is exactly correct. Any condition which brings the development into alignment with a finding of fact, you know, such as not detrimental to the use of neighboring properties or violating the character of existing standards or one of the other uses, any condition needs to be tied to one of those findings. After deliberation, we may see if there's any other information from the applicant or questions for the applicant.
That's fine. Questions can come at the end. That's fine. From anywhere to staff or whoever. Gotcha. All right. Anything else you want to add?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. David Brown, Withers Ravanell, 137 South Wilmington Street, Raleigh. I'm a landscape architect. There was a question about the open space. I did a little bit of math on the fly in my head. I believe we have about 18%. That is, the requirement would be to have about 10 and 1/2 acres. This plan presents you with 15 and 1/2. Roughly a 45% increase over the code requirement. The same thing with the active open space. 25% of that overall open space has to be what we call active, and it's defined. Again, it would be going from 2.65 as the code requirement to about 4 and 1/2, about a 65% increase. And when we're talking about these buffers, the other thing that we do want to stress is that the resource conservation areas, our stream buffers and our wetlands, those are not included. Those are above and beyond the open space requirements. There's a lot of numbers, but if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Questions or comments?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My last and final, what I brought up earlier tonight. Can we talk about the neighborhood meeting? There were seven questions posed, and there was no responses. You might have responded in the meeting, but it wasn't written in our packet. Could you respond to those?
The first question, Ms. Fine, who lives on Iris Street, was asking if it was going to be paved, which it is, and if there's enough right-of-way. And that brings up the easement. There's an existing 40-foot easement that the town actually has a water and sewer and access easement on. The proposed paving would be within that 40-foot strip. Second question, neighbors actually to the west, across the stream, had questions about trespassing. There's a diagonal cut of a transmission line and gas line that cuts across the bottom part of the property. Those concerned about trespassing across through that unvegetated area onto their property across the stream. Thought about putting a fence up, but because of the easement rights for the CPNL or Duke Power and the gas line, we can't put a fence up for that. But we can't, we don't see it as a likely option for somebody to trespass across that stream. The next question, concerns about people shooting guns currently. It being currently a farm field with some deer stands, that'll be removed. Hopefully that goes down, but something we can't guarantee in the area. The fourth question was about, a question about the housing units. I think staff pointed out that the mixture of housing units, the green are the rear-loaded single families, the purple are the front-loaded single-family homes, and then the yellow are the townhomes. So that's the mix of units in this development. The fifth question was about additional traffic on Wildwood Drive. And at the time, Wildwood Drive, we were not proposing to pave it, and now we are. But I don't think it changes the answer of additional traffic. Cars, I don't believe, would go that direction to get out to 70. They would stay on the interior roads of the subdivision. The only really benefit of Wildwood Drive be seen by the residents that currently live on it. They would use that for their access to Highway 70. Question about stormwater. So on this, we're proposing two large stormwater ponds, one a wet pond and one a dry pond to meet the stormwater regulations, and they're in the bottom southwesterly corner and on the west side there. The next question was about Lot 332. And 332 is the lot at the top right, just as you're coming into the development, where it's a blue area. I don't know if I can use the laser pointer, but I won't try then. It's on the, when you're coming in, it's right there on the corner, and that's going to remain as open space and will not have any development on it.
Is that the larger one on the right side? Or actually, the left side as you're entering?
It's, so if you're on, no, on the far right. Yeah, the farthest right blue rectangle. No, the other one on the, that's it. Yeah. And that would remain undeveloped. The price of the homes was discussed, but a home builder has not been selected, so that's a bit of an unknown at the moment. And the timeline, our response on that is a little outdated now. We're hoping to start construction in the summer of this year, if approved. So hopefully that answers all the questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Grantis.
At what point do you expect to put the amenity package in?
In the first phase, the way it's phased. Because that would be a selling point for the development.
And I raised a concern about Hardy Lane, and that seems to be the lowest graded area in the traffic study. And my concern there is, especially at peak hours, it would be extremely difficult, in my opinion, although I'm not a traffic engineer, to be able to get out and make a turn left to head west.
Hello, Cole Daggerhart, Exalt Engineering. We performed the traffic study, and it's typical at two-way stop control intersections for them to experience moderate to long delays, level of service E and F in peak hours, particularly along heavily traveled roads such as Highway 70. So the way the delay is calculated for a stop control intersection is just to look at the delay for the minor street approaches. For, say, a traffic signal intersection, you look at the delay for all the approaches. So the level of service F is indicative of only the northbound left there coming from Hardy Lane rather than all of the approaches. If you were to look at the delay as a total at that intersection, it would be much lower.
So I would assume then, if other development in that area occurs, something would probably have to be done at a later date? Is that fair to say?
Say, yes. It would depend on, really on NCDOT requirements for that, for that intersection, yes.
That was a safe answer.
So I'm trying to figure it out, this traffic thing too. So the majority of the people in the subdivision will go all the way to Sheetz to get on Highway 70?
That's correct, yes.
And by doing so, they're going to have to go through Rose Street, Tulip Street, Iris Street to do that.
Okay.
And how many vehicles a day is that projected to be?
So the total number of vehicles that will use Iris Street to Tulip Street to Rose Street in the AM peak hour, that this development is adding is approximately 70 exiting in the AM and 25 entering in the AM. In the PM peak hour, there would be 46 vehicles exiting and 86 vehicles entering using that route. The other two routes in and out of the development are Iris Street to Tulip Street to Aster, where they could make a right out on Aster and perform a U-turn movement further to the east, or they could use Wildwood Drive.
So I've been here a while. That, those streets are the most quiet streets in the whole town of Clayton. And I find it hard to believe that like the neighborhood doesn't understand that it's getting ready to go from mild to wild on their streets, you know, considering that right now, there may be 10 cars a day that come and go, or 15, one per household or whatever, to, you know, way many more times that amount through there. But they didn't offer any concern of that during meetings, or they had no concerns about traffic coming through their neighborhood or anything like that at the neighborhood meeting.
They did have a few concerns, yes. But at the time, yeah, there will be more traffic was the answer. It's just how the connections are proposed and where the existing road stubs are.
And is all of that existing infrastructure that we own and that we have currently, is it ready to handle that?
The Iris is not paved of any sort. They are proposing to pave and provide full curb and gutter. The other sections, and I'm drawing the blank on the names through there, Tulip and Rose. They are proposing to ensure that there is at least 20-foot of asphalt down if there is not currently 20-foot.
Is that an adequate amount? 20 feet?
Um.
Is it a street or is it an oversized driveway? I don't know where I'm heading with this.
The, those roads, unlike Iris, are public right-of-way. There is varying amounts of asphalt out there currently. I'm not going to say whether it's a, I mean, that's, I guess, an opinion of whether it's a drive or a street, but 20-foot would provide access into lane traffic.
It would allow for the fire truck to go through there and all of that?
I have not reviewed a terrain template or anything, but I can't speak to the depth for sure on that.
So in your traffic analysis, there was comments made about conflicting movements at the intersection of Iris and Tulip. And I was wondering, one, whatever the conflict is, does it need to be resolved? And if so, how will it be resolved?
Yes, the recommendation was to place a stop sign at that intersection to resolve the conflicting movements.
Okay. And then Wildwood apparently could not be aligned with the leftover median break that's a part of West 5704. What sort of problems does that create? And how can they be resolved?
The reason that the, we had talked with NCDOT about realigning that leftover with Wildwood Drive. The reason why is the spacing between that intersection and the signalized intersection of NC 42 and US 70. NCDOT prefers a larger distance between those median breaks to enable queuing, to not queue up past the leftover intersection. So traffic that is exiting Wildwood Drive and would like to go to the west would make a right turn out of Wildwood Drive on the US 70, and then at a median a right turn out of Wildwood Drive on the US 70, and then at a median opening with a, with a U-turn movement provided in a TIP project. Between Wildwood and Hardy Lane, there's a, there's a median open, opening where residents could make a U-turn to head west.
Okay.
And is there adequate space there for the backup of traffic that wants to turn left to go back to go west?
There is, yes, sir.
For an entire, or for 50% of a subdivision that wants to do that?
So the, the number of vehicles within the trip distribution that would be making a U-turn at that intersection in the AM peak hour, 19 vehicles, and in the PM peak hour, would be 12 vehicles from the, from the residential development.
Okay. And can you give me those numbers again from the beginning about coming through, coming through the whole neighborhood that's there to get to the Sheets, to get to 70?
Okay. From, from the neighborhood to the Sheets, there would be 70 vehicles generated by the development in the AM peak hour, and 46 vehicles generated by the development in the PM peak hour.
And can you explain to me how that is calculated? Because in layman's terms, for me, here I have got a super-dense subdivision with two cars per place to live, but I'm only seeing numbers of 70 cars in the morning and 46 cars in the evening.
So the Institute of Transportation Engineers has a manual that's used to develop trip generations, trip generation rates by certain land uses. And so for the specific land uses, the single-family and the townhomes in this development, we use those rates to develop the total number of trips for the development. And then to determine the distribution, what percentage of those trips travel which direction along US 70 or NC 42, or leaving and entering the development, those percentages were based on the, the number of vehicles currently traveling in the area on US 70 and NC 42. So we looked at a distribution of those percentages, and we applied those directly to the trip generation rates and how those are recommended to be entering and exiting the development based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual.
What's the edition date on that manual?
Give me just a second, I can find that for you. I do not have the date. It is the latest edition of the ITE Trip Generation Manual. If you'd like, I could Google it for you.
Say again?
If you'd, if you'd like, I could Google that.
Well, I'm curious, and I think you know why I'm asking the question. If that manual is 15 years old, to me, I'm not so sure that the validity of the information is, is as accurate now as it was then.
I can assure you that it's not 15 years old. It's regularly updated by the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
And typically, how often do they revise it?
I, I would, I would, I would hate to guess, sir. I can find that information if you have other questions, while other folks are answering questions, if you'd like.
I know I'm being a pain, but yeah, that would be great. I'd appreciate that.
Okay, sure.
And also I have a question about, well, do we have any more questions about the industry of traffic?
Any more questions about traffic?
Actually, I have one.
Okay.
You did the, you did the traffic analysis 11 months ago. In your expert opinion, do you feel that, that there has been any change of any significance at all that could conceivably change your report?
I'm not aware of any new approved developments. I think staff spoke to, to no additional approved developments in the area. In addition, we used a growth rate in the area to estimate future traffic growth until the build-out year of 2023. So even, even without additional approved development traffic, we, we still estimated a growth rate through the build-out year to account for any additional changes in traffic during the time period.
Okay. Just, I think two more questions and I'm done, I think.
You're good.
Has any member of your group reached out to the school board of Johnston County, making them aware of this development?
No.
Any particular reason for that, given the size of this?
It was part of the TRC.
Yeah, we were thinking that was part of the, the review of the town.
I thought it was.
The review.
And would there be any interest in considering dedication for property for a school in this development?
I have to defer to the developer on that.
Hi, I'm Johnny Chapel, 305 Horn Street in Raleigh, and I'm one of the developers. Do you mind repeating your question, counsel?
Yes, I was wondering if any consideration would be giving, given to dedicating property to the Johnston County School Board in hopes of putting a school in that particular development?
That is the first time that we've had that question in a year and a half, close to two years of working on this, this particular property. It has not come up in the pre-development meetings with the town or in any of our neighborhood meetings. So I would not really be prepared to answer the question at this time, other than to say that's not been in our plans in the, in the past.
I don't really think you have the land capacity to be able to do that, because an average elementary school was going to require 12 to 17 acres.
And that's in, in studying the site previously, Mr. Mayor, that's the feedback that we got, that, that, with the density that we were seeking on this site, the number of homes and townhomes and the surrounding area being relatively undeveloped on this side of, of 70, that, that we would not really be applicable for that type of request.
And since you're there.
Sure.
The last question would be, with respect to the buffer to the west, would you be amenable to extending the buffer, say maybe to as much as 50 feet max?
And you are referring to the buffer?
Adjacent to the Cox property?
Again, this is the, that's the southern buffer, correct? Not the western?
I'm sorry, east?
East. Wildwood Drive is the eastern buffer, so the, I think the Cox property would be the southern buffer, is that?
Well, the, the Wildwood might be the east buffer, but your property continues on further east. That's where it starts to abut, the Cox property.
Understood. Again, and I can let Ryan comment on this as well, but I think in all of the discussions we've had so far with the town through pre-development, through site plan, through neighborhood discussions, and, and getting comments from staff, that has not come up. So we would obviously appreciate consideration of the plan that we've worked pretty hard on for a number of months now. Having said that, we want to be good neighbors, and we be, we strongly believe that we're presenting something that is a huge benefit, not only to the town of Clayton, but to this corridor on 70 and the surrounding, both commercial and residential development that is no doubt to follow. So again, we tried to develop a site and a plan that we felt went above and beyond requirements on the whole, and happy to have any continued discussion. That was a very vague way of not answering your questions.
It definitely went above the requirements that we have for density. That was above and beyond.
I would agree with you there, but I think we also went well above, even more above and beyond, Mr. Mayor, the requirements for open space and active space on the site, which were things that in our very first meeting with some of the folks from the town, comments were made that it was felt in some parts of Clayton that a couple of developments had been approved too quickly in the past. And then you would drive through the neighborhood, and you would see cars all over streets in an unkempt neighborhood. We really tried to listen to those early comments in creating the pocket parks that are in the property, the green space, the walking trails, the alley-loaded product instead of every house having a garage that faces the street, so that we really tried to bring something, yes, that, that drove density, which I think is also needed, depending on what argument you wanted to have, but more importantly, brought something that was of quality.
I have no doubt about the quality.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you both. All right. Yes, you have the Google to answer.
The Institute of Transportation Engineers publishes, or published, the current edition of the Trip Generation Manual in September of 2017, and it expires in, at the end of August of 2021. So it, it looks as if they're publishing a, a new version every four years.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
I have once thought on the southern buffer with the Cox property. Tonight, I've, I've learned a little bit about what the future anticipated use for that property might be. We have two street stubs, and I might see if we could go to the plan really quick, that are in close proximity to each other and also to the southern boundary. And this is a little bit on the fly, and I'm going to put our good staff on the spot by asking a question if Street F, if, if we might consider Street F not connecting to the Cox property, that it essentially would become a T-intersection with Street I? I think that might reduce some of the future conflicts of, of using that property or developing it, you know, as, as a tech or an industrial campus. So essentially, next to Lot 74 and Townhome Lot 275, just to eliminate that road connection, I don't think. Traffic engineers? That that would have a substantial impact on connectivity. Most of the good work on connectivity is, is already been accomplished.
So the plan as proposed today was TRC certified. If access points would be, or stub outs removed, we would need to take it back to TRC to make sure that all departments are on the same page with it.
Guarantee you, my client does not want me to do tonight. So is, is an option to make that a condition and then have TRC create a resolution? Is that an option?
If I may jump in, the council may, may put on any condition which it feels is necessary in order to, if it wants to, if it seeks to approve this application with a condition, the conditions are to make it in compliance with the findings. And so if that is a condition which you believe is necessary in order to approve it, you could deny it without the condition because it doesn't meet it, or you could approve it with the condition, the condition could be worded as subject to approval by TRC. And then if TRC did not approve for some reason, it would come back to council. So you could word a condition such that it went for TRC approval. And if it did not obtain, if, if, and going through TRC approval would mean just the TRC discussing it at one of their next meetings, and, and, you know, not that formal, it doesn't have to be delayed, it's just until the next meeting or when they can put it on their agenda. And then if TRC had concerns based on the condition, or the impact of the condition on the project overall, it would come back to council.
Thank you.
It's logical to assume you don't need that stubout street. And I certainly think if I'm acquiring property for industry, the least stubout streets I have, the better. I don't, you know. You can, you, you got sworn in, you can come and speak, Jason. Just state your name for the record.
It's in Cox, we're the owners of the adjoining property. The issue is not the street. The issue is houses next to a mega site for industry. It's obvious from this discussion that there's been no consideration, with all due respect, from both planning and from the developer, on what that piece of property means for the town in terms of large industry. The discussion of a row of hedges between a Nova Nordage or a Griffles is not realistic. You have houses up against, it's, again, it's not the road access, you've got houses on the line, on the property line of what will be a mega site for industry. And through this discussion in approving a master plan, it's, it's obvious from the discussion that that has not been a consideration. I think the developer themselves said tonight is the first night that they've considered that that piece of property might be an industrial site. There needs to be that discussion. There needs to be both in terms of what will be there and what that means, both for the residents and for the, the future development and an industry that locates there for the town.
Mr. Bond?
Chris, could you come? I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
That's, that's what, I've been on the spot a lot, but let me, let me first and foremost, I was not aware of any of this until the Cox family called me last week, and we had lunch on, on Thursday. And so as a small business person, looking at the developer, I apologize for not being aware of this, because I would have loved to have been involved in the, the earlier discussions as far as the neighborhood meetings and that, but I was not aware of it now. So let me.
The question I have, as you travel throughout the whole county, you see situations like this. What, what, what do you see as a buffer between industrial and residential?
Well, that's a, that's a loaded question and a tough question to answer, because depending on what type of business and industry that's, that's located there. I mean, if you're talking about something that's 60, 70 feet high in the air, are you going to have the neighbors that are going to be coming up here and asking for it not to be rezoned because they don't want the industry in their backyard? My, my main concern is just the fact that anytime that, when you're competing against property, or competing for projects, excuse me, is that you want to make sure that you, that you show your best foot. And I can tell you that industry, when they're looking at things, they're aware of what neighbors are around, not neighbors in the sense of commercial, but also from a residential standpoint. And so that, it's just a, it's a concern or a red flag that I see of having neighborhoods, you know, butting up against one of the largest pieces of property that we have remaining in the town of Clayton from an industrial standpoint. And I know that industrial growth is, is, is key for the town, and I want to make sure that we put our best foot forward, and hopefully there's a compromise in between the two.
Thank you, Chris.
Mm-hmm. Were you sworn in? Sorry. It's a quasi judicial hearing. So we've heard from the applicant. Is any rebuttal, questions of the applicant in the form of rebuttal? Yes, sir?
My only rebuttal is, is a couple things to answer, Mr. Cox's question. The statement I made was that we, it was not that we were not aware of the Cox property. I think everybody's aware of the Cox property and, and what that is and what that potentially could be. We were not, we had not been posed the question about a school, was the, was the remark I made earlier. All I would like to say in response to potential industrial or commercial use of maneuvering property is, I feel like that's, while very possible, is still dealing in hypotheticals. We're dealing with something real. We're trying to bring something that we think adds a lot of what we have heard through discussion with neighbors on Iris Street and Wildwood Drive and all over is needed to this corridor. We would love to be good neighbors to any future industrial use next door, and happy to talk about what buffer may be there, but to limit the potential residential use, which I think is much needed for, again, this town and this corridor because of something that may come, I think's a disservice. may come, I think is a disservice.
So just because I've been here a long time and I've been at this for a while, totally get where you're coming from. But it's not a hypothetical, it's just a win.
Understood.
I mean, there are monthly inquiries. This is probably one of the most highly sought after pieces of property on the east coast of the United States. So it isn't just a good one that's located on 95 and 40. I mean, it's, it is a prime for the whole southern seaboard of the United States.
Not disagree with that.
We know it's not, we know it's coming. We know it's coming. And even in our plans for future wastewater treatment facilities and all that, we are planning for what we know is going to end up there, which is going to be industrial.
And those people have to have a place to live, right?
Without question, but I mean, do I want to invest some money and be looking at a damn 40-foot tall brick wall that's an industry manufacturing facility?
Understood.
Probably not. I don't care how nice my fire pit is, you know? But more importantly, you know, like for you, willing to step out and invest and do good for Clayton, you know, I don't want to see your investment diminish because people go, oh, yeah, it's a great place to live, but then I got to look at the 60-foot wall from whatever company, you know? It's that kind of thing. So I'm not saying it's not good or bad or right or wrong or whatever, I'm just saying.
And I'm not saying that the
It's a pretty definite, we know some industry is coming.
A lot of things are coming there, for sure. I completely agree with that.
A lot of things are coming in those quadrants of 42 and 70, which is the real reason I'm having some struggle with the whole traffic issue. Because when that quarter of 42 and 70 develops across the street from Sheets, north of Sheets, you know, tremendous traffic impact.
Well, I think Chick-fil-A is coming too, so that's only going to hurt.
Well, I'm glad you've heard Chick-fil-A is coming. I'll be flashing the mirror here is that Chick-fil-A is coming.
Refrain from hearsay, I'm sorry.
So that's, that's the only real concern that I have, you know? I'm not really like thrilled with this density, you know? I think it's too much, to be perfectly honest, but business is business, and you are able to go through the process and develop the way in which you have done. There's nothing wrong with that. But I just think about future growth of not only this neighborhood, but what's going to transpire in another quadrant, you know, within the next three to five years. And then look at the traffic we're going to have at 42 and 70, and you still aren't going to be able to turn around at Hardy Lane, at Bobby Hardy's, and come back west. And it's kind of frustrating.
Clarify a few things.
Hey, clarify a few things for us.
Samantha Willen, labor planning director. So the school stuff, the calculation was about 211 children. We get the enrollments and capacities and then the projection from the school system. So we do have that, that is the projection for this neighborhood, 211 children. The buffer, the question about the buffer on the Cox property, so if that property was to be developed with an industrial use, since they are the more intense use, they will be required to install quite a large buffer. The industrial is much more intense than the residential, so there would also be a buffer on that property as well, not just on the Buckhorn branch, but on the adjoining property to the south. They'd have to do their own buffer too. And then the comment about the TRC and the access points, we're a team now, and we review everything together, and planning does not want to say, yes, let's go ahead and we're okay with removing this access point if police, fire, DOT, engineering, public works if they're not okay with it. So that is why we chose to have, to go back through TRC if that is the wish of council.
Ms. Grantis.
What does the 2040 plan project the Cox property to be utilized for? Or what are the options available?
I'd have to look in the comp plan, I'm not sure off the top of my head. We can be pulling that up. But I would assume if this was low-density residential, I'm assuming it may still say low-density residential, but as we know, the comp plan is five years old, and as fast as we're growing, a recommendation for any town is every five years you update your comp plan. So honestly, our comp plan does need to be updated, which we are looking to do in the immediate future, so.
And when you refer to the buffer that would have to be executed on the Cox property, let's assume for a moment that that would be an industrial complex.
Yes, sir.
What type of buffer are we talking about in terms of width to separate that residential area from that industrial area?
Well, the maximum now the code would allow would be 20 feet, but most of our industrial uses, I wouldn't say most, but a lot of them are going to be special use permits. So that would be something that would come through the council, and that is something that could be conditioned to be an increased size buffer, a larger buffer as big as you would like, to a certain extent. Anybody who spoke, make sure you did sign one of the sign-in sheets, please. Thank you.
Did you get sworn in?
Yes, I swore in in the beginning.
Okay.
With the gentleman.
Did you make affirmation at the beginning of this hearing? I'm sorry, I didn't know if
I swore in with this gentleman over here.
Okay.
With all due respect to the builders and to the mayor and council, just out of the words of the council themselves, they recognize that in three to five years, that the impact of traffic is going to be extreme. My suggestion to even the builders, which would be a little bit more expensive, but why not just be a little bit more proactive on, initially on the street sizes? Let's be smart. If we're going to take on a project as dense as this, make the roads significantly wide enough so we avoid head-on collisions and we avoid any potential road disasters preemptive. The short time I've been in this community, just the amount of traffic that has hit O'Neill, Pritchett, Covered Bridge, Smithfield Road is insane, and the amount of accidents that have happened in just the last 18 months has increased, you hear it on the news consistently. If we be proactive now from the start with developers, apparently they planned it out, and as you said, Mayor, they did it properly where they were able to get the units approved or are on the path for approval. But let's not make, in the words of the council, oversized driveways. Let's make roads that will prepare us for the future and make it safe for the community, especially as more industry is growing. Because when 42 is finished, we're going to be in the process of making that road wider just by the nature of the beast. So that's, thank you for hearing me out.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this?
Do you have one sworn in?
That was sworn in, clarification.
May I?
If you were sworn in, yeah. Anyone else wish to speak that was sworn in? Okay, if not, then I will turn it over to the council for question and answer. Staff, developer, any questions?
I guess one of our options is, is that it's not imperative that we vote on this tonight. It's conceivable that if we chose to, we could table this. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And if you want to table it, is there additional information you want to request from staff?
That's what I'm thinking.
Or from the developer?
I would not want to table it arbitrarily. I would want to have a good reason to table it.
Absolutely.
So. Well, I was going to say, I think there's probably some questions that come up for me that probably staff can answer. I go back to this particular development not being totally compatible with the 2040 That's been acknowledged by staff, yet staff feels because of the nature of the development, the way in which they went about it, that even though it doesn't, and you correct me if I'm wrong, even though it doesn't conform, it still becomes compatible or acceptable. And that's, I'm having a little trouble with that. I don't know, I guess what I need to hear is why? Why have you made the decision that it's acceptable when it's not in compliance? Even though they have made some changes, it's still not in compliance? So I'm stuck with why, why are you approving of it?
I don't, that's why we're resounding.
That's not my understanding.
If I may, Mr. Grantis, sorry Samantha, if I just jump in, it might be helpful for the questions to be posed, and then for a reminder, the applicant has the burden of proof, not the staff. So if there are questions the council has related to how the staff came to their recommendation, very fair questions of the staff. But in terms of satisfying the findings of fact, the applicant has the burden of the evidence of showing that the plan is consistent with the adopted plans and policy, has the burden of finding that it does not meet, or sorry, that it does meet the required specifications. So
Well, I felt the, and I understand that and I appreciate that, I felt the place to start was there.
Absolutely.
Because, and this is supposition on my part, I think based on their findings, the developer made the decision to do the density that we are looking at tonight.
Sure. And I think, and the council weighs both of those
Yeah.
In its decision. So if we're, if the, if the point of this is to provide the information upon which we might table it, then I would, if you want to hear from staff tonight, that's also, that's also fine, the public hearing is open, we have not closed it. But if the point is to lay out what you would like to hear, what you would like to hear and would be the basis from a motion to table it, then I think you should lay all that out for your council members as opposed to do question and answer. But if the goal of your questions are to hear that information this evening in order to make a decision, then absolutely.
Well, I think, I think I'm forced to hear it this evening because of it being a quasi judicial environment.
No, sir, you could make a, you can make a motion.
But I cannot talk to anybody outside of this meeting
They would come back and present it at the next hearing.
Right.
They would come back and present it at the next hearing.
Okay.
So, I mean, again, it is however you want to proceed. You can ask them to speak to it tonight, and they can speak to what they can, and they can say, we'd have to come back with something further if they can't speak to it tonight, or you can, you can consider continuing the hearing and then laying out what you'd like to hear from all the parties. Your option. I just wasn't sure where you were going, if you wanted to hear more this evening or to continue it.
I'm not opposed to tableing, but I would like to hear as much information as I can from staff, which then should enable me to ask additional questions of the applicant.
Fair enough. So the public
To try to get to where you just suggested.
The public hearing is still open.
Yeah.
It did not close until deliberations.
So the answer, try and answer those questions. Here is the future land use map, and as you can see, everything on the northern side of 70 is employment center, which is our industrial, most of our retail and industrial uses. And as you can see, everything on the south is low-density residential and recreation, open space. So even the Cox property at this time is still considered to be, in the future 2040, is low-density residential. So this is another instance where we are growing faster than our comp plan has allowed us to. We're a lot different town than when this comp plan started back in 2013, 2014, it was eventually adopted in 2015. So again, it needs to be updated, and I think just the way that the growth had happened previously in Clayton to what is going on now and that more tracks are being developed, that is why there are things that are not going to be consistent with the comp plan. So that is that. As you can see, I'll see if you can move it up just a little bit, you can probably see pretty much everything on the south side of 70 is going to be low-density residential. Okay, it's just a snapshot, thank you. And then as far as going against, it's not really going against with the comp plan, so there is legislation out there that as soon as the, if there's a rezoning that happened that permits a higher density residential or any sort of higher density than what the comp plan allows, the comp plan is automatically updated, the future land use map is amended. Where previously you would have to go through another motion to approve all that, but now it's all done in one fell swoop. But with the size of this tract, the amount of open space provided, I mean, over 15 acres of open space, 3.81 density is decent density for what we have. I'll have to look at our spreadsheets, and I can tell you exactly what our other subdivision densities are. Give me about three seconds, I could pull it up, I can give you a kind of correlation if you would like that. Or we can wait, and I can have all that information for you at the next meeting.
My preference is because you would have to pull the information, it might be better to table, but I would certainly like to hear from the applicant because I do want to ask them about the finding of fact number three and ask for their justification.
Okay.
You want to do that now?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's appropriate. So finding of fact number three is the subdivision will not be detrimental to the use or orderly development of other properties in the surrounding area and will not violate the character of existing standards for development of properties in the surrounding area. The response was the proposed subdivision will not be detrimental to the orderly development of other properties in the surrounding area. The project will provide future road stubs and utility extensions that will allow for future development of adjoining properties. There's no mention made of being either in compliance or out of compliance of 2040 plan. And I could also actually go to number two, but I'll stick with number three right now.
Okay. Stay here.
I think one thing I'd like to start with is the density. It's been a topic of discussion tonight. About 27.8 acres of this site is in the community mixed-use designation. That has a cap of seven dwelling units to the acre. Theoretically, if you were to maximize that to its limit, it would be 194 dwelling units. The low density, which is on the other two parcels, recommends three dwelling units to the acre, or 170 dwelling units. You add those two together, you get 364 dwelling units. Tonight, we're presenting a plan with 324. So while the boundaries, we're not adhering to, you know, keeping the orange, orange and the yellow, yellow, I think the spirit and intent of meeting the town's comprehensive plan, I do believe is met at 324 dwelling units. We have a community plan of a series of connecting streets within the community. We are providing road stubs to our neighboring properties, and I believe those road stubs are at a spacing and frequency that are appropriate to the existing uses, which are mostly residential or vacant land that is deemed in the future to be low-density residential. And I think another thing about this property, to the north, we have a very important intersection, interchange in the future, 42 and 70. The future land use map envisions some redevelopment of a more intense use. We've certainly heard tonight from our neighbor to the south that they have a plan for their property. I believe what we're proposing tonight is a good transition from what is going on in 70 to what we hope in the near, very near future will happen to the south.
Could I interrupt you for just a moment? You said to be in compliance, it would use the term, or the number 364 units, is that correct?
Yes, that's our, that is our calculation. If you were to take the future land use map designation densities and just apply them to the acreages.
Okay. Yet you're doing 324?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry, continue.
And I think that when we were talking about meeting the spirit, the intent of the comprehensive plan, it is a guide, is a very good guide. It's not code, and to me, it's subjective, but is this a reasonable request? Yes, I think it is. I've been a land planner for 33 years. Is it in the public interest? We're bringing a brand-new pump station to the town of Clayton, one that I believe right now is on the small side. We're bringing significant off-site road improvements. I've got that number here in front of us. Ryan, you can help me out. On Wildwood Drive, it's about 2,000 linear feet of asphalt, curb and gutter and sidewalk just on the one side, not on just on the one side, not on the east side. On Iris Street, that is 475 linear feet of full public improvement, curb gutter, both sides of the street, asphalt sidewalk on one side of the street. Internally, if we talk about the, the plan itself, and I might see if we can put that back up on the screen. We've talked a little bit about that open space that we went above and beyond because we think it's important as planners and people who build communities, neighborhoods, that we wanted significant open space. Ryan and his team did, I believe, an extraordinary job of avoiding wetlands. There's significant wetlands on the site. That's where you don't see any purple or blue or green, just leaving them alone to the extent possible. On an 85-acre project, we have one stream crossing, and it is sitting on top of an existing stream crossing. So we've done a lot to minimize our impact to the natural system there. What am I leaving out?
The, the pocket parks, about two and a half acres are in the prime location of the development. The thought behind those was the, the rear-loaded homes in green, shown in green there, would be able to use that, and the whole development, we would be able to use that. But as, that is the highest and driest part of the, of the property, and we set that aside for an amenity, I think a great amenity for this development.
It's kind of like two big, open playfields right in the middle of the neighborhood, and you know, that makes me happy. I mean, if you've got kids, you've got a dog, if you're an old man like me, and you just like to go out for a walk every so often. But I, I think a lot of, of careful thought went into this plan, especially on the internal parks and those open spaces. I tend to ramble, so I may stop and see if anybody has a direction for us or a, a question.
Questions?
I think you've answered mine with respect to the finding of fact.
Okay.
I don't have any further questions, Mayor.
All right, anyone else? If not, then I'll call the council into deliberation and find out what the wishes of the council were. I, I just want to throw out there, if you choose to approve this, would love to see some conversation around buffer on the east side. I'm not worried as much about buffer anywhere else around the properties as much as I am adjoining what would be future industrial property. And what is on here totally meets code and/or requirement or whatever, but it needs to be bigger and more dense than that. But I have no doubt that they're going to, you know, be a good neighbor, and, and they want the best for the other side of the fence, just like they want the best for their side too. So.
So I think that, that the applicant gave a compelling response with respect to finding of fact number three, in, in my opinion. I think, I think he justified the fact in a positive way. So I thank you for that.
All right.
You ready for motion?
Yes, sir.
At considering the competent material and substantial evidence presented, including the application and material of records, I move to approve with conditions preliminary subdivision plot application number 2019 dash 39 dash SD Buckhorn Branch. This motion is based on the following findings. The preliminary subdivision plot is consistent with the adopted plans and policies of the town. The subdivision meets all required specifications of town Clayton Unified Development Code. This subdivision will not be detrimental to the use or orderly development of other properties in the surrounding area and will not violate the character of existing standards for development of properties in the surrounding area. The subdivision design will provide for the distribution of traffic in a manner that will afford or mitigate congestion with the immediate area, will provide for the unified and orderly use of extension of public infrastructure, and will not materially endanger the environment, public health, safety, or the general welfare. The conditions on here are that the buffer to the east between the subdivision and the Cox property is yet to be determined and will be settled at a later date.
Second.
We have a mo.
If I might just make one clarification. In addition to that condition, are you also proposing that the conditions in the staff report be part of the motion?
All conditions in the staff report be met.
The conditions in the staff report, and in addition, a condition of a buffer on the eastern property to be approved at the discretion of the staff? Or to be set at a later date, but how, how would you propose it be set?
I don't have a problem with it being by staff. I just want to make sure that we're communicating that we want a substantial buffer there.
Of at least, I'm, I'm suggesting language to make it actionable.
The, you know, as lo, as big as it can be, as full as it can be.
At the discretion of the staff, and that is in order to have the property.
Right.
Not be detrimental to development of properties in the surrounding area.
Right.
So the motion's on the table.
But do you all feel that those stubout streets are needed? Because that's a cost that, that he's going to incur to put in those stubout streets. They're going to land in front of the industrial. So I don't know if part of the, you know, stipulations need to be that, that we ask for the RTC to review that and decide, but I, I don't feel like it's needed. I think that's money that the developer is spending that is not needed because no industry is going to want a street to tie into, to a local neighborhood.
What, what happens if that winds up being residential?
I mean, you'll just have to figure out a new way to connect. That's all I know.
Sorry to interrupt. One comment I would caution when it comes to removing those stubs, emergency access per the fire code, any type of development in particularly high industrial uses that would require multiple points of access to be able to respond from an emergency services standpoint, may or may not see that as a benefit, even if it was only in the future an emergency access. At staff level, I would, I guess, encourage you to consider that, and if they don't have to construct it at this point and just reserve it, that's, that may be an option that you can consider. But by eliminating it, it may, in the future, become a consideration for the ultimate development of that property.
Well, maybe the better word is to reserve it, but I would hate to, for them to have to put in all that infrastructure for a stubout street that's never going to have anything that could invite more trouble to go jump the end of the stubout street and play on the farm on the other side and that kind of stuff. So. But at the same time, I'm not interested in the developer taking that property and building something on it. So maybe to reserve that is probably the best way to phrase it in case in the future it needs to be there.
That's at the discretion of the council.
Overburdening the developer with costs on something that's never going to be utilized.
Completely understand. Again, I think to the plan director's point earlier, that was where she was going to defer it back to TRC for that kind of discussion. But again, if that's part of your motion to review the reservation of that for future access, we can, we can work with that. Yeah.
I might suggest then the condition that Mr. Holder proposed could be, would be reworded to be a buffer on the eastern side, a substantial, large buffer on the eastern side at the staff's discretion, as well as a determination of whether stubout roads shall be constructed or reserved in consultation with the TRC.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think we're talking about the southern border. I just, I, I think we keep seeing, saying eastern, but if we're talking about the property adjacent to Mr. Cox's land, that is a southern boundary. Just.
And I may have missed. Apologies.
But I just want to get that into the record. We're talking about the, the line at the bottom of the map. Okay.
No problem.
Buffer would be to the southern property.
The buffer as it pertains to the adjournment of the Cox property.
There you go.
I don't care if it's east or west or south. There's only one Cox property.
Thank you, Mayor. You are correct. In order to provide for the orderly development, a large substantial buffer at the discretion of staff, as well as consideration of whether stubout streets need to be constructed or simply reserved in consultation with the TRC.
Yes.
Kimberly, if you got all that?
Is it clear as mud to you?
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second for approval based on.
Michael.
So we have a motion and a second with.
Conditions.
Conditions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like some. Motion carries. Is that the only action you needed on that board?
Uh, just a reminder that there's a wastewater allocation request accompanying this development. Now that's been approved, I do want to present a few items real quick for you guys to take action on if, if you choose to. The applicant has requested wastewater allocation for the development. As it was originally submitted, they submitted based on the state 2T rule standard of 360 gallons per day. The town actually has a, a reduction in flow allowance that allows us to only account, or excuse me, to account for it as 250 gallons per day per residential unit. So the resolution as written is actually overstated, but I did want to just go ahead and confirm that for the 324 units proposed, there'd be 81,000 gallons per day of allocation requested. In addition to that, the amenity area would be approximately 1,250 for a total of 82,250 gallons per day of wastewater allocation requested at this time. Staff, as previously done on some of the other larger developments that we have, would recommend reserving the 82,000, 82,250 gallons per day and actually approving the allocation tonight for the first phase of development, which is, and apologize, I was more prepared when I thought the other item was going to go faster. So staff would recommend allocating the 27,500, right now at staff, or excuse me, at council level, and defer future allocations above that to staff level as the, the development progresses and the phases come in. So that's a total of 82,250 gallons per day for the 324 units plus the clubhouse.
But the commitment's only 27,500, which carries us through phase one.
Correct. With, with deferring future allocations to staff level.
The balance is actually allotted to them, is that correct, even without the usage?
We, we would hold it in reserve, obviously as the development progresses and build-out occurs for development this side. This is a multi-year development. I'd probably have to defer to the developer to really understand exactly what they're expecting, but by the time they're looking for additional flow, once they got lots on the ground, and then we're looking at phase two or phase three, will be a couple of years from now down the road when we've got our plant up and, or on a path at that point.
And are you satisfied that the committing this allotment still allows us the opportunity to continue to approve additional developments as they come before us, should we so choose?
There's, there's still additional. Again, the wastewater allocation, allocation policy that we brought back to you next week sets out kind of a, a game plan moving forward of how to allocate and, and kind of score those future developments to align with the, the, the will of the council. But that, that will certainly be the guide used to move forward. And again, that guide is hopefully going to carry us through just the next couple of years while we get the new plant under construction.
Okay. Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the wastewater allocation. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like some. Motion carries. Thank you, Rich. All right, and up next on the agenda is the other public hearing, which is 2019 dash 183 SUP Clayton Storage Special Use Permit.
This is also a quasi-judicial hearing, as the last one was. The council will consider only evidence that is presented tonight by individuals who are affirmed, and that would be competent material and substantial evidence, and will not consider hearsay. At this time, we'd ask anyone who wants just to speak on this item in any form or fashion to please stand for affirmation.
Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief? Thank you, and please remember to sign the sign-in sheet when you come to offer your testimony.
There is. Good evening again, Council. Haley Hoag, Planner 2. This request is for a special use permit for Clayton Storage. They are proposing to develop accessory limited outdoor storage on the subject property. The property is located off of 70. It's adjacent to Clayton Crossing Shopping Center and just behind Liberty Auto and Gerber Auto. And the property is zone Highway Business B3, and the property is just under four acres in size. So this is the proposed site plan. Again, they are proposing accessory limited outdoor storage specifically of boats and RVs. This would be an accessory use to an existing self-storage facility on the property to the north, which is Clayton Storage, and was recently approved for an expansion. If approved, it would be required as one of the conditions of approval that we are recommending to recombine the properties. So it would serve as an accessory. They are proposing three storage canopies, which would consist of 26 spaces for the RVs and boats to be parked under, and there will be a self-service kiosk on the site for customers to utilize. And the property is accessed off of 70. There is an existing access road off of 70 to get into the site. They can exit that site through there as well, but they could also exit through the northern property for Clayton Storage, which would connect into Minekey through an existing access easement. It is located in a floodplain entirely, but it has been reviewed by the town engineering department and inspections department, and the structures, and it's one of the conditions of approval that we are recommending, is that the structures be designed in accordance with floodplain requirements, and so they will be reviewed further at construction drawing and building permit. And the property is providing landscaping along all the perimeters to meet the Class C buffer requirements. Since it is outdoor storage, it is required to have an opaque barrier so that the right-of-way, you can't see it from there. So they are proposing an opaque gate as well as opaque fencing so that it will be screened from Highway 70 and the neighboring property. And up in the right, right-hand corner of the screen is what they're proposing for the metal canopies. It would match the materials of the existing building, which is metal as well. And then below, and in your agenda packets, they did provide the applicant renderings of different view sheds of what the proposed development would look like from 70. This picture below, it is shown from number two on the bottom right-hand map. And so as you can see on there, it's mostly screened by the existing landscaping and landscaping that they would be planting as well as fencing. You can see looking directly down the road that there is that fence and that gate that would be entering into the site, but the majority of it is, seems to be screened from view, from the existing buildings and the landscaping. The proposed use and site plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan 2040, which designates the land as community mixed use and does usually consist of retail uses or non-residential uses that would serve the surrounding community. And it is consistent with the findings, or, sorry, with the surrounding land uses, which are commercial, and they have addressed the findings of fact in the application as well. And with that, we are. And with that, we are recommending conditions. If you do motion to approve, we are recommending conditions of approval be placed on the application, which were outlined in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer questions, and the applicant has a presentation prepared as well.
Questions for staff? All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Council. My name is Cliff Minsley, and I'm with 10 federal companies. I am one of the developers behind the project that we're presenting before you tonight. Address is 4101 Lake Boone Trail up in Raleigh, and I'm happy to present the project here. I'd just like to share that I have a couple civil engineers with me this evening that can answer questions, and then also the landowner, Mike Marvel, is here to speak on his own behalf since he has a vested interest in the property. I won't speak so much to the engineering-related slides, but this is just showing some existing pavement around the existing storage building that we'll be using as a secondary entrance for the development. There was discussion during the planning phase about some stormwater concerns, and this slide demonstrates that we are in compliance with the design guidelines and that we plan to provide stormwater collection and to allow stormwater to flow out of the site in a controlled This is a site that, or a slide that relates to the hydrology of the area. There was quite a bit of concern from the neighbors at the time. I think we've assuaged most of that concern since the project is almost not even visible on the slide, but we included it nonetheless in case any discussion came up on it tonight. This was a slide that Haley presented earlier, or a portion of it, but we thought it would be relevant to provide a different renderings of what the site might look like. And I think what this slide basically demonstrates is that it's really tucked away. You, in all, for all intensive purposes, from Highway 70, you would not be able to see the development. Slopes down towards our site and is wrapped around behind significant vegetation that's existing and remain in place. These are just mockups of what the sheds look like. You know, they're structural-gauge steel. They're, in my opinion, I think sometimes you can get a construed view of what a shed might look like, but our intent would be to be renting these spots to RVs and boats that are, that are in working order, that are, you know, generally fairly expensive recreational leisure vehicles, and we think that the spots will lease anywhere from $200 to $250 a month, so certainly not storing like a car with no wheels or something along those lines. That's all I have to present, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Mr. Grantis.
Could you share with the council the pros and cons of the flood insurance study done by FEMA?
I'm not aware of the flood study done by FEMA. We engage a flood study through the Timmins Group, and the representative from the Timmins Group is here and could speak more, in a more educated manner about anything flood-related. But what I would say is that we intend to probably raise the site out of the floodplain ourselves, or at least the new portion of the site. There's an existing 12,000-square-foot building, so that's not really going to go anywhere from an elevation standpoint, but if I do that, I would probably seek, you know, a Loma certification, in which case flood insurance wouldn't be required.
Well, I think, I think that study was actually a part of the Timmins.
Okay.
Or analyses.
I might invite my flood, if there's going to be flood-related questions, I'd like to invite the, you mind helping me out? Thanks so much.
That'd be good.
I believe in surrounding yourself with people whose strengths are your weaknesses.
It's Becky Ward. I'm with the Timmins Group, and we did a flood study to evaluate what the impacts might be as far as on the discharges with the development in the area. This floodplain is not in any kind of regulated floodway, so it really wouldn't fall within a FEMA requirement to have anything reviewed by them because they're not, you know, the development is in the, you know, flood fringe area. We, what we were concerned with was what the impact of this site would be with the additional impervious, if it would cause any additional flooding in the area, and what we, we ran a HECC HMS analysis because the FEMA floodplain only had one discharge, so we did a little bit better analysis where we divided the development into different catchments. And I have to get my map because I can't see that far, but it's very, very hard to see on this map, but there's a catchment, a very small catchment just above C1 that's called C2A. I don't know if you can enlarge that. And that's as far as it's going to go, but it's, it's a very small dot. If you, very, very hard to sight. You can see POI-2 on that map. There's a tiny circle that's above that. That is the development, which is 3.7 acres in the entire watershed. The watershed is 2,694 acres. So what we looked at was the impact of what the discharge, how it would affect the FEMA floodplain as far as discharge, and what we came up with was that in the 100-year storm event at POI-2, which is right at the discharge point of the property, that the increasing discharge would only be .1 to .2 CFS as far as increasing any flood capacity, flooding. And then what we did was we took that discharge and ran it in a typical cross-section, and it did not show any increases in the water surface elevation in the cross-section with that .1 to .2 CFS increase.
And the swale that you mentioned, and I can't remember which report it is, I'm trying to look for that. There is a swale that's mentioned in one of the reports, and curious to know who's going to maintain that, that swale.
Do you know where the swale is located on the property? It's off the property? It's not on our parcel. Apparently, the swale that's mentioned in the report is not on our property or on the parcel that we'd be, we're discussing. So I don't, I frankly don't know the answer to that. We plan to maintain and landscape the property that we will be purchasing from Mike and developing.
In the findings of fact, fact number three that states that the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. And your response was the adjacent parcel is currently being used as a self-storage facility, and the proposed development is an expansion of that facility. All adjacent properties are already developed and have separate access to the public transportation system. The proposed development will use existing infrastructure and will not impact adjacent properties since the proposed use matches the existing use. I won't speak for the rest of the council members, but I know that when we have torrential downpours, there is flooding. And I think, I could be wrong, but I think some of that comes, is directly related to this property in question, and I don't see any reference to trying, well, first of all, to flooding issues. I can kind of understand why I wouldn't see that, but what's going to be done to not have that be a problem?
Well, as far as the, our development's concern or our proposed development, there will be additional impervious surface, but rather than having a site that currently sheath flows directly into, and there is a draw between the property that we are intending to develop and the adjacent property, and the neighbors actually came, or the property owners from that property came and voiced that concern, and I think we were able to assuage their concern because we are going to be installing curb, which will direct the stormwater to our stormwater device. So rather in a drastic rain flow than water that would normally just sheath flow onto that property and contribute to the issue on their property, it will now go into our stormwater device and be released in a controlled manner. And to speak to the flooding issues in the area, I understand that the area is prone to flooding, but the point we were making was that, you know, I think that is collectively an issue for the area in general. I think that just over many years, maybe there hasn't been enough stormwater retention devices that have been, that have been provided upstream, and what you're seeing is a confluence of all those issues directly acutely at this site. So I'm not, our proposal is, we're not saying that we're going to be making the situation much better, but we also aren't going to be contributing to a problem that we didn't create.
And who's going to maintain this device? I would assume that members of your organization?
Yeah, we will. We have an in-house management firm, and we'll be the ones that own the facility after it's completed, after we complete construction, which my firm would be building the facility as well. We would maintain the stormwater device and keep it in compliance with, you know, whatever regulations there are for that, for that device.
I think that's all I've got.
All right. Anyone else? Anything else you want to add?
No, we look forward to being, we would like to be, you know, new neighbors of Clayton, and we would think that we'd be great stewards of the property, and we think we're finding a creative use for a piece of property that has remained vacant for quite some time. And, you know, we're excited to be, become part of Clayton, and we think you guys have a bright future, and we want to be a part of it.
Good answer.
Thanks.
Did the property owner help you with that one?
I'm going to get some golf lessons from.
There you go. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition? No one wishing to speak in opposition, no need for rebuttal. I'll turn it over to council for their discussion before I call you into deliberation. Any further questions of anyone? All right. No other questions, then I'll turn, I'll call you into deliberation and wait patiently for you to make a.
Actually, if I may, could I ask the staff one question?
Absolutely.
This will be directed to our engineering group. I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Based on all the information that we've received, specifically with relationship to the flooding, et cetera, I'm sure that you've, you've read these documents. Are you satisfied that we're not going to have any serious issues here that would increase the flooding potential?
So as far as the construction drawings and the process, the applicant would be required to apply for a floodplain development permit. The, there are requirements around the floodplain fringes and ensuring that the structures are at least two feet elevated above the 100-year water surface elevation. A detailed review and analysis of the entire corridor through here would only be required from the town standpoint and state regulations in the event that they were proposing to develop within the floodway, the regulated floodway that is outlined by FEMA. This, this analysis here has not been thoroughly reviewed at this time by staff, and so I am unable to comment on that right now. The, at construction drawing time, when the floodplain permit comes in, we'll have more information as far as the water surface elevation, the proposed first-floor elevation, and look to see what those elevations are of the new structures, but I can't speak to the study at this time.
But based on your answer, we still have the ability to, to inject criteria to help facilitate a limited flooding issue? That's, sounds like what I'm hearing because of the construction drawings.
As far as further requirements?
Yeah.
I believe so that.
I believe the question is whether staff, staff has the ability to, in its review of the construction drawings, object if they feel there's an issue or a problem?
Yes.
Or make a, force the developer to make a modification, my words, not council's, guys, but that you still have discretion at the time of the review of the construction drawings if there's a problem you see when you have the analysis.
A thorough review of the detailed flood study of the entire corridor would only be required in the event that they are proposing to impact the floodway. Currently, there is not significant change or grading to that, so it wouldn't be a requirement, but I assume that is something that you could place on it if so desired.
Like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Grantis.
After considering the competent material and substantial evidence presented, including the application and materials of record, I move to approve SUP application 2019-183-SUP Clayton Storage. The application will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans and as submitted and approved. Two, the applicant meets all the required specifications and conforms to the standards and practices of sound land use and planning to the Town Code of Ordinances or other applicable regulations. And three, that the application will not materially, would not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. And four, the application will not adversely affect the adoption, adopted plans and policies of the town or violate the character of existing standards for development of the adjacent properties. And if approved, the applicant, if approved with the conditions which are noted in the agenda packet, the applicant meets all the above findings, subject to the following conditions that I just mentioned. And do I need to inject one additional condition based on the construction drawing reports?
Mr. Grantis, if there's something that you believe the applicant needs to do or needs to alter its plan in order to satisfy the findings that you just read, excuse me, that would be the condition you would, you would, you would put in. So if you have a concern in its current state or the information you've received this evening that one of those findings is not met, then you can add a condition that would have it meet that finding. And so if you have a concern over, let me ask you this, the flood, flooding concern, is that related to public health, safety, or?
It's related to the adjoining properties.
Related to the adjoining, the value of adjoining properties.
And based on the, the answer that I, we got from our engineering staff, I feel comfortable with approving this because of the construction drawing analysis that's going yet to be performed. And I just want to ensure that if there has to be changes to those construction drawings, that we have the ability to do that.
So I think a, a condition could be that a floodway analysis be required if staff felt that it was necessary? felt that it was necessary?
And I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's how a floodway analysis works, so let me defer to.
To provide some more further information, if I'm not mistaken, again, this flood study of the entire corridor was not a requirement of the town. I believe it was between private parties to to help understand really what's happening and to gain a better understanding of how the additional impervious associated with this project would affect the water surface elevations throughout the entire corridor through there and around adjacent properties. FEMA and the state and our floodplain ordinance does require anytime that floodway is disturbed for a full study of this. At this time, there's no significant grading or change to that. I think there, I mean, one thing we could ask was them to provide this to review and a no certification of no rise, which means that an engineer is sealing this study and saying that we're not proposing any change to water surface elevations that would be upstream or downstream. That's going above and beyond what our requirements technically are in the state's requirements, but that could be something that you, I guess, have placed on this project, that even though they're not disturbing that floodway, this flood study showing that there is no rise in water surface elevations in that flood event upstream or downstream due to this project.
Mr. Baron, maybe my clarification, I may have not understood this. Has the flood study that you referenced in your testimony already been completed by the applicant?
I do not know to the extent of that, but I do know that there was some flood studies done that they shown. Again, I don't know the exact scope of the extent of it. My understanding was it was in response to neighboring concerns and everything that they did, and that's been between the private private parties.
Okay. Would would you be comfortable, would staff be comfortable with a with a condition, subject obviously to council, that directed the applicant to provide the full study and for staff to require such other action it felt was necessary? Is there a second step to the flood study?
I mean, there could be lots of options there. I mean, if the study does show a rise, there could be numerous, I mean, there may, I'm not sure any specific mitigation off the top of my head without full thing, but there may not be many mitigation options in the vicinity without retention, and I'm not sure what space would be available for that. But we certainly can review and see to it what the change in the flood elevations is as part of the construction drawing review.
And would you do that under your normal review process anyway?
We would not unless they're disturbing the floodway. There's so when the flood flood maps, you have the floodway, which is the inner area where you're going to see most of the flow. There's a detailed analysis that goes into what is that, the width of that, and then there's the flood fringe. So in the fringe, we do not require any specific hydraulic modeling out in the fringe. There can be development in that fringe as long as the structures are raised two feet above that water surface elevation. When you're developing within the floodway, there are additional requirements and hydraulic modeling that go along with that to show that you're not going to impact other properties. And they have done some modeling, but again, I don't know the extent or in scope of that.
You mentioned a no-rise letter?
A no-rise certification, yes. That would be going through that significant detailed study, which it sounds like they may have done some, and showing that there is a no-rise in water surface elevations. The water surface elevations during a base flood event, a 100-year event, do not change with the new impervious.
Not to put you on the spot, but do you have a recommendation for a condition that would address Mr. Grantis's concern? I just want to make sure I get it technically correct. And then, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to suggest that we invite perhaps the applicant's experts to come and speak to this if they want to, because they might be able to help us craft a condition that addresses the concern they also are not obligated to, nor are you to reopen it, but I might suggest that. Do you have a suggestion of a condition that would address Mr. Grantis's concern that the applicant has not provided enough evidence that there is not an impact to adjoining property values based on the potential impact of discharges and flooding such that the applicant, we'll come to you, such that the applicant would would be able to provide evidence that bolstered that condition?
Yeah, I mean, the no-rise certification, going through a detailed study and showing that there is no rise.
Okay.
Again, I it sounds like they've done some of that, but I don't know the details, but a condition that is above and beyond the requirements since they're not proposing to change the floodway, that would be an additional requirement that you could put on it. And then we would review that study.
Again, I would I would suggest that we allow the applicant to respond, but you have heard a recommendation of a condition. Again, I defer to the will of the council to hearing from the applicant.
You are killing me tonight. Yeah, we'll hear from the applicant. Come on.
We might hear from multiple of the applicant.
Well, thank you. I think what we tried to do on, it's awfully loud. What we were trying to do is try to FEMA only has like one discharge, and what they do is they run, like they take the whole watershed, they get a discharge for that point, and then they run it through a hydraulic model all the way to the top. What we were trying to do with this analysis was actually to look at the site to see what those discharges would be from the site, to see if we had any increased discharge, and then look at the effects of the models. It's a little bit different than a no-rise analysis. We were going to do a no-rise analysis to be FEMA compliant with this site. What we would do is we would keep that discharge and increase it, we could increase the discharge and then just run it through and then run cross-sections and look at what the cross-sections show along the site. Well, we didn't do that for this particular analysis. We looked at increasing that discharge. We had a very small discharge increase, and then we just looked at one cross-section. So it wasn't really a hydraulic model, it was just modeling through one cross-section. And that cross-section was just FEMA actually had a cross-section that was right at the end of our our property. So we just used the FEMA cross-section and we changed the discharge that would be increased from our site at that particular cross-section, which was at the end of the property. And with the increase of only, what did we have as far as discharge? We had a point one to point two, so we had point oh two CFS increase, and the discharge in the model at point oh two for 100-year storm event is 2,655 CFS. So we were only increasing it by point oh two as far as the site. So when we looked at it in that FEMA cross-section and we increased that discharge, it had no no effect. It's because the watershed is so very large that we're a very insignificant, a very small portion of this very large watershed that's, you know, providing a lot of discharge in here. So and the reason we did that was to, you know, talk to different property owners to relieve their concerns. So we, the the study we did is a little bit different than a no-rise analysis, but we use more hydrology than hydraulics. Does that help? Does that explain kind of what we did?
I mean, I think I have the gist of it. I guess if you guys have questions about it or for the applicant.
Yeah, and normally, I guess with the the requirements, we, a flood study wouldn't have been required. We're allowed to develop within the flood fringe, which is we're outside of that floodway, which is your higher flow area. And so we kind of went above and beyond with this study to show that we wouldn't have any impacts during the 100-year storm event with the discharge. And what this hydraulic and hydrology analysis shows is that by the time the peak from the larger watershed comes down, the peak flow from this increased impervious area in the smaller sites already passed. Because you're talking about a timing of a storm event hydrograph, it's it's not peaking at the same time, and that's why we ran the HMS analysis. You've got this big slug of water that's coming down from the watershed, but it takes time to get to this particular site. By the time it gets to this site, the peak discharge from this site's already passed because it's past, you know, minutes or hours before that, so that when you get that bigger slug from the watershed that's coming down, we, that's why we only get the point one or point oh two increase in CFS. This is already out, the bigger slug is coming back through, and that's what we're looking at when we're looking at, you know, the flood fringe areas. We're looking at the extent during that peak discharge time.
If I may ask, if may I?
Absolutely.
In your in your expert opinion, do you believe that this property will not have an impact on adjoining and abutting properties due to flooding?
During the 100-year storm event, no, it will not.
On a regular rain day?
On a regular rain day, we have showed that it is going to increase the water surface elevation, it's going to increase the discharge from the site. We did not run the smaller storms through this cross-section, but again, the water from the site is going to be put into this retention basin. That is going to mitigate the one-year. Robbie, what other storm events?
Five.
Five and.
Five.
We, five and 25. The one-year, five-year, and 25-year storm will be mitigated by the stormwater device. Any storms larger than that, 50-year storm event is very close to 100-year storm event when you look at hydrographs, so the larger storm events are going to probably be the same as the or similar to the 100-year storm event where we're only getting that point one because of the position. If this site was higher up in the watershed and we didn't have as big of an area, then we'd have more impact, but because it's down in the watershed and we've got that big volume of water that's coming down to this site, this small little site is not affecting that peak discharge.
So I'm going to modify, based on the information, plus there's a specific condition here, which I think may take care of my concern. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any additional conditions.
Great.
I think the existing condition number six, which states during the construction drawing phase, a no-rise certification letter shall be submitted to the engineering department. This letter must be submitted by an NC licensed engineer and certify that any development within the floodway will not increase flood heights upstream or downstream.
So we have a motion?
Yeah.
And a second. So we have a motion and a second for approval of 2019-183-SUP. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under Old Business, is the downtown mural guidelines.
Stacy Beard, Public Information Officer. I'll click through this presentation that's not supposed to be there. All right. So murals have been something that we have talked about for, I feel like, a long time in Clayton. We've had the planning department looking at it, and remember Jay McLeod, a former planner and our former downtown development coordinator working on them, and I think they were thinking about rotating murals that would affix a structure to a brick side of a building, and then we would change out the murals. We've also had our Downtown Development Association members very interested in adding murals to the downtown because they're all about enhancing downtown. And then we have one of our newest advisory boards, the Public Art Advisory Board, who is just excited about expanding art and bringing more art to Clayton and building on the sculpture trail that they already do. So what is before you today are guidelines that were was our attempt to bring together all these three entities that have kind of been working not so much together, to bring them all together into one program guideline that would meet all of those goals. You know, with with the Downtown Development Association, it's enhancing downtown. You know, murals aren't just about pretty pictures on the wall. They can bring visitors, they can add to tourism, they can, actually, there are studies that show they bring people more frequently inside a building when there's a pretty mural on the side of it. So there's some economic development interests from the Downtown Advisory Board in adding these elements to buildings in downtown. From the Public Art Advisory Board side, it's building on the sculpture trail, which already brings people to downtown. They envisioned seeing a tour of not only the sculptures but the murals. And then lastly, the planning board and economic development, the planning department and economic development department excited about not only the economic development aspect of it, but obviously too, doing the fun things that planning does, and that's making sure everything's up to code and is we are doing the most to keep them safe and up to code and lasting. So what you see before you is a program guideline that would leave the responsibility of oversight with the board that I am a liaison to, the Public Art Advisory Board. And we kind of followed the structure that the sculpture trail is under now. Sculptures are submitted, the Public Art Advisory Board gets together, they have a subcommittee, the subcommittee, just like the subcommittee proposed for this, is made up of downtown business owners, of local artists, of downtown residents, of a DDA member, and they get together and make selections. So that would be the same sort of makeup as that for the mural program. You'd have a business or property owner come in, say, hey, I'm interested in doing a mural. We say, great, we've got this application, we want to help promote you, we want to put you in our marketing materials, we want to help walk you through this, and we bring them through the process. They, of course, would go through the planning department and we'd look at it. One example here, and the Public Art Advisory Board took a couple field trips to check out murals in other towns. We're not obviously the first to do it. What you're looking at here is the first 3D mural, apparently, in the state of North Carolina, and it's in Sanford. So if a proposal to do something like this came to the planning, through the planning department, they would say, okay, those are really cool giant 3D heads of cows. Wouldn't it be horrible if one of those fell on top of those people as they were taking the picture? Right? So our our necessity to have it run through town staff is to make sure that these, you know, are safe, they're up to code. In this particular case, another interesting aspect of it was that this is on the side of a building that is an ice cream shop. And they had originally wanted to put ice cream cones in the hands of the kids and the women that are standing there on the side. Well, if they put ice cream on there and they sold ice cream inside their store, that's considered advertisement, and it's a sign, and it's no longer art. So there are some processes and things that we'd like these murals to go through just to make sure that they're up to code. But we're excited about this. We have several businesses in downtown, property owners that that do want to come forward. They already have ideas. I had one local artist who sent me a whole proposal over the weekend, over the holiday week, that has materials that we use, the type of paint that you would use, who she would have do it. So there's a lot of excitement about this, but we would love to harness it, make it unified. I think once one started, we may see a spark of others wanting to do it. And there's just some assurances in the process that it can be built into, you know, promoting, I can see us adding this to the sculpture brochure, you know? And then when you're walking around downtown to take a tour to see the sculptures, you're also stopping by to see the various murals throughout town. So there are some stipulations in there, like, hey, make sure your neighbor is okay with this, you know, if you're going to put one on the side of, I don't know, one of the businesses down here is the is the, are the people next to it okay with looking at that every day when they go out the door? So there's some things in here that are meant to support being a good neighbor, being a good downtown property owner, and and we're excited about it. We're excited to move forward. So what we're looking for tonight is not your approval of the guidelines, they're just guidelines, they're not a policy. We're looking for you to approve that the Public Art Advisory Board, like the sculpture chair, be the sort of authority that oversees this program and make sure that it's moving forward and supporting both the town and the property owners who are interested in supporting art.
Awesome. Questions or comments? Mr. Grantis.
I want to thank you and whoever's been involved with this. This could go back further than than 2005, but I can tell you, there was an individual in this town who was adamant that he would wanted to to have murals and mentioned towns, I believe, in Idaho and Washington State. And I personally, I thought it was an excellent idea, and it never got off the ground. So I'm glad to see it.
Yeah, it is a long time. Yeah, it, it is a long time coming, and I think it was because everybody had ideas, they were off doing their own ideas, this kind of brought everybody together, um, and hopefully we'll see it move forward. Like I said, there's some chomping at the bit to start, to start work. Hold on a second, sorry. If you guys have any questions for me, it sounds like Heidi Peach, who's from the downtown development association. She, we also brought this to their board to review. So they were, they had a chance to look at it and continue to sort of weigh in on, on it.
Questions or comments from staff? Are we all good? Do you want that in the form of a motion for this to be appointed by the public art advisory board?
I, I think so. I think that would be good.
We entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, the guidelines for the downtown mural program as it pertains to appointing the public art advisory board with the oversight authority.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Great. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay. Up next is the fire advisory board recommendations.
Yes, this is our last advisory board, um, recommendations for this year. It's the fire advisory. There are two current vacancies, and we are recommending that we reappoint Matt Sutfin with a term expiring 12 of 22, and Karen Patterson with her term expiring 12 of 23.
Move for him?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the appointments to the fire advisory board. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next are budget amendments for the capital budget projects, Little Creek Outfall and Walnut Creek.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council.
They always make you wait till the end, don't they? Like, you have to come and sit through all this just to talk about some finance at the end of the meeting. There you go.
Uh, we have two capital project budget ordinances tonight we're asking council to approve. The first one is the Little Creek Outfall Sewer Line, that's a replacement project. Uh, that's approximately, uh, 1.9 million dollars. Uh, that'd be funded with the fund balance appropriation from the water sewer fund, uh, Pago. Uh, the second one is the Walnut Creek Sewer Extension Project. That is a, uh, 5.7 million dollar project, and that is going to be funded with the SRF funds from the state, uh, 20 years, uh, at an interest rate that's a little bit south of 2%.
Awesome. Any questions of staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve the adoption of the ordinances, number 2020 dash 01 dash 03 and 2020 dash 01 04. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on with staff reports, beginning with the manager.
No report.
Town attorney.
No report.
Town clerk.
No report.
Any other staff? I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Virginia Hinton. I need you to get in the microphone.
We need it for the record, unfortunately.
My name is Virginia Hinton. I need to sign this, too?
No, we don't.
I live at 236 East Front Street. I moved back home in 2005. I was born in that house in 1949. I've come over here since I moved back home, and I come with the same issues that I came here with in 2005. This council hasn't done anything to alleviate issues on the north side of Clayton. We are in downtown Clayton. We are part of downtown Clayton on the north side. We're supposed to have the same amenities as Main Street, but we don't. I've come over here about the traffic that comes through there from Church Street to Central Street, it's just like a, a racetrack. People come through there, the speed limit over there is 35, but the speed limit on Main Street is 25. We have a park, a town park, that, that kids go to. They come from all over Clayton to go to that park down there to play basketball. Kids come down Main Street on skateboards, bicycles. People come from the north side to take their children down, from all the way, all, everybody on the north side uses that park. But people come from 42 and the new developments that's up here on, at the Walk and Amber Park up there, they come through there doing 50 because there's no stop signs for almost a mile. I have seen people get killed on Main Street, on, on Front Street. I've seen the girls in the wheelchair up there at Church and Front get run over in their wheelchairs trying to get to the pantry, well, Clayton market. Nobody stops at that one stop sign. They don't stop, they do a rolling and look and gone. They don't stop. Down there at the post office, same thing, once they get down to the end, because I walk all over Clayton, every day, and I take notice of everything in Clayton, every day. Jody know it, I mean, Mr. Mayor, you know it. Down at 256, it's rental property. We walked it when, uh, I mean, I guess it was in 2008, how they throw mattresses, chairs, garbage, beer cans, everything in that drainage ditch that's down at 256. The landlord don't do nothing for his property. I come with the idea of people that have rental properties in other towns, if they don't keep their property up, they're penalized by the town. Because they don't keep their property up. All over there on the north side is raggedy rundown houses that are owned and rented, and the owners of the houses don't come back to do any upkeep of the property. But we are part of downtown Clayton, but nobody comes, nobody sees it the north side. On Stalin Street, they, they just leave the houses and let them run down to nothing. They should be condemned and torn down or used for fire practice for the fire department. I'm 17 years old now. I still walk them streets over there and pick up garbage off the street because that's my neighborhood. I've said something about the erosion in the ditches that's on Front Street. I've seen the town of Clayton maintenance department fix up other places where the ground is eroding. This tree, pecan tree, is going to come down on this lady's house if they don't put something, if the town of Clayton don't put something in that ditch to stop that erosion. That tree's been there all my life, but the roots are showing now, so eventually it's going to fall. I asked for a fence to be put up in front of there because it's a drawl of maybe about seven and a half foot down in that hole. When I was little, I used to could jump across it. Now it's about 10 foot wide because the erosion is coming from the south side across Front Street through that big ditch, and people's property is being ate up. I come about the 25 mile per hour speed limit. We need 25 and we need stops over there. I thought about having some stoplights, but then I said, last time I was over here, that that would have been a little bit too expensive. I said, can you give us five more stop signs and make three-way stops at corners of church and front? Three-way stop at Nunn Park and church. Three-way stop at the city park up at Cooper and front. That's so those kids can be safe up there in the town of Clayton's park if you're not going to bring the speed limit down to 25. So I think stop signs are important and everything else. I really do. Because whenever people come out of through Austin Acres there, I can see both ways all over Front Street as you pass by my house, because that's the, it's so many hills, you can't see cars that are parked on the side of the road. It's a guy that comes out of Austin Acres, and he comes up that hill there on Church Street, and he go airborne whenever he hit the railroad track. His car is about a foot, two foot off the ground, because he likes to do that, and come to a screeching stop up there by where, uh, the thrift shop is. I hear him. And I'm at my house, and it's one more other thing, and then I'm going to sit down in this, because I'll be back in another six months, and still nothing will be done by the town council and the city managers. Because I've been doing this now since 2005, same conversation, same conversation. I'm gray, and I'm older, and Mr. Gray, you've been living on the walks over there. I live by myself, I try to keep my house pretty decent, but whenever I see people that rent property and don't fix their properties up, there's something wrong with that picture to me. Because you're making money off of a property that you don't even need, and you don't make your tenants keep it up. And I, I believe with all my heart, just like they do in Raleigh, they find those people up there if they don't clean up their properties. I know my brother lives up there, and I've asked a couple of people that live there, if you take on some good practices, the people that own property, that north side, they don't even look away from it. They just swirly. They always have issues with them. They, I go over there, too. They got a pure hatred over there as far as people on both sides of the street. They tell me they need a lamplight over there, they couldn't get down the street because they're parking all the way in the street, on both sides. You can't even get a car for that. And that's sad, because that property, those streets belong to the town of Clayton. It don't belong to those people that's got the streets blocked over there. And it's for helping the people over there, too. They needed help, they couldn't get it because they got the streets blocked. All I'm asking you to do is to be the, tell me to just take a look at whoever does all this, because all they do is get right up the damn street, but don't stop and do something over there. And I wish that I knew who the owner of this person is. Couple of houses that don't even have a one inch, and that's the safety hazard. Young ones, by the time they're all paid, all residents are supposed to have two inches. And they dig the holes, but they have to split in half. So just take a look at what I'm talking about, because it's not fair for us over there on that north side, eating and sharing my tire with people asking, and I'm trying to do that, and they come around me. We don't even have lines in the street for, for people not to ask anything over there, and they do it anyway. And it's not safe over there, it's unsafe on Front Street in Clayton. It is very unsafe, even for me walking. For every, even cross-trekking uses Front Street, they go all the way down to 42 using Front Street. They're not safe because people are checking. They run, run into, down into the park down there on the cell phone chase. She run right to the edges, down into the bar, park on the basketball court. And you don't tell me the truth, don't you, because that, oh, you had police dogs and everything down. They don't pay attention. But all I'm asking you to do is just be concerned about us on the north side. Thank you.
Thank you. What else?
I was going to talk about the art.
And I'm sorry if it upsets you.
Don't worry about that.
But I agree with Virginia. I think we do need three, three-way stop signs there. Um, I've been involved with the downtown development with murals, and I'm very passionate about it, and I just, all I want to say really is I like what the art advisory board has done, that incorporate all these, um, ways of, um, protecting the buildings after they're painted and all that kind of stuff. But I just want to say that because I'm involved with downtown, um, also with the Clayton Visual Arts Group, uh, I want to make sure that us Clayton artists get an opportunity to paint, that's all. Because we're all like, really wanting to show our work, and, um, we have so much talent, I've said it all along, for the last eight years, well, I've lived here 10 years, but I've been putting art in Clayton Center for eight years when I'm allowed every three years. And, um, we're really growing, and, um, I, I have ideas of even putting together a mural team with some artists that I know, and I'm hoping that the information that, that Stacy has gotten for what products to use and how to maintain it will be shared as well. That's all. That's all. I just want, I'm really happy if we get some murals.
Thank you, Hadi. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. I'll now turn it over to council for comments. No comments from the council? All right. If that's the case, then I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, because we're going in to discuss specific litigation, the, the parties to that litigation are Shenandoah Home, Shenandoah Homes, excuse me, and Capital Properties, too, just for the record.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Make a motion and go back into regular session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night. (applause)